It's 10 o'clock. Welcome to the Delnart County Board of Supervisors meeting this day, March 27, 2018. And also welcome to our icebox this morning. Hopefully everybody brought their coats, slippers, mittens, and scarves. We've got a full agenda today, so we won't keep this pace too much longer, but I do want to ask Liz, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, with a motion by Supervisor Cowan, a second by Supervisor Hemmingson, and a 4-0 vote, the board voted to defend Rasmussen versus Mix, U.S. District Court of Oregon, case number 118, CV 00405, CL.
Thank you very much. Kylie, please note that Supervisor Gitlin is not in attendance today, unless pause briefly for a moment of reflection. Very much. Mr. Serena, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, King of the Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any new employees to introduce? No, free and none. All right. Well, let's go ahead and move forward with our consent agenda items then, which are items six through seventeen on our agenda, and open that up for public comment at this time. No, I just opened it up to public comment on the consent agenda just now. But it is on the agenda for 10:05, and we're not there yet. We're still a few minutes. I will open. Nope, no worries. It's all good. All right, so, public comment on consent agenda items only.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion on the table.
Second.
And a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. And since we do have a few minutes, let's go ahead and also take up budget transfer items. Item number eighteen, which is approve and adopt transfer of 03-04 in the amount of $10,000 for the county council's payroll and professional services legal budget, and item number nineteen, which is approve and adopt budget transfer 03-08 in the amount of $102, $875 within the public health budget for program operations of Oral Health Grant. Let's go ahead and open up those two items for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion on the table?
Move to approve budget transfer 03-07 and 03-08.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. And it is 10:05, and it is now time for public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Please approach the dais. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Benita Cabrera. I'm with Seroptimus International of Crescent City, and I brought over a flyer for all of you for Jane Doe in Wonderland. It is a very important way that we've come up with to teach our young people about sex trafficking and how to keep them safe around it. So this play, the poster I gave you, it also speaks about Tribal Headquarters performance. That one is, that is not what I'm here to talk about today. That is completely separate from the one that's happening at Crescent Elk on April 5. These were just the posters that I had left over from the high school. And the brochure that I gave you is just about the folks who made the play. It was created in Humboldt County in 2015, early 16, and it was created by three HSU grad students in theater, and Elle Snow, who is the sex trafficking survivor from Humboldt County that's been educating our communities over this last couple of years. And I just want to read a little bit about the play so that I don't miss anything that I think that the community or the board might want to know about. So Jane Doe in Wonderland unites survivors, professional theater artists, and communities in an effort to prevent sex trafficking through art and education. Appropriate for ages fourteen and over, the play and talkback draws parallels between Lewis Carroll's Alice in Wonderland and the world of domestic sex trafficking, a world that exists in most rural communities in America, and ours is not an exception. This play is written to be accessible and appropriate for a high school audience, presenting the material in a manner that is neither violent nor explicit. The Wonderland metaphor allows the audience a familiar glimpse through the looking glass into a world that is all around us yet which most of us don't understand or recognize. When people understand the tactics a trafficker takes, which in this play is the rabbit, their concept of prostitution is turned upside down. When teenagers understand what a pimp is, their likeliness of being trafficked drastically diminishes. Our hope that is that by raising awareness among teens, educators, and concerned citizens, we can pay more, I'm sorry, prevent more of our youth from becoming victims. And I just want to say that our foster youth is the most at risk of any vulnerability because of what they've already been through and how easy it is to convince them that somebody else can give them better than what they already have. So the school district has, they printed all of the posters and the tickets for students. Students under eighteen and all educators are free. The only people who are paying to come to this performance are the general public at $15 a ticket. And the school district has even gone a step further, and if a student will bring a safe grown-up with them to the play, the school district will pay for that ticket for that adult. So that's pretty amazing. So this group isn't going to really be making a lot of money from our community because most of the folks that are coming will be free. So I encourage those who don't have a high schooler to buy a ticket, $15, at Delnart office, or just come to the door. We have 400 seats, and I don't know if Crescent Elk has ever sold out the auditorium, but I would really like that this is the opportunity that we have. I'm sorry, Mr. Gitlin's not here. He did ask last time I came, what can we do? We have to come to these events. We're still showing I Am Jane Doe every second Tuesday of the month at the Family Resource Center, sometimes to an audience of one, but we don't care. We're going to continue showing it as long as people come. But we really encourage folks to come out and learn as much as you can about sex trafficking because it affects your community, and the children in our community are really at risk. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Benita.
Okay.
Thank you very much for keeping this visible with the sophomores.
And I'm moving away at the end of the year, so somebody better figure out taking that over.
Well, hopefully you have some depth in your bench to keep up the charge.
I'm working that. I'm working on that. All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you again, Benita. Okay, public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We're a little early for our 10:15 timed item. So let's go ahead and move forward with item number twenty, which is to direct staff to pursue rural planning assistance funds for Elk Valley Crossroad corridor plan and authorize the Director of Community Development Department to act on behalf of the county as requested by the Assistant Engineer. Rosanna, good morning. Please join us at the dais.
So this was, this project was put together in response to the systemic safety comments we received last time, as well as Tamara Layton of Local Transportation came to me to let me know that these funds are available. Essentially what they are is statewide, we are unable, agencies are unable to spend all of their rural planning assistance funds, and so they go back to a larger pot that becomes a competitive process. And so we would be applying for those funds to study the corridor. And I know that we put a lot of focus at the board meetings on 199 and 101, but I get a lot of calls about the corridor as a whole, and site distance, and speeds, and things. So we're incorporating, or we're proposing to incorporate the whole corridor and do a plan similar to what we did on Elk Valley Road.
Very good. Public comment? Seeing none. Questions from the board. Okay, then I think if we have consensus, can we direct staff to pursue the rural planning funds? Yep, do we have consensus? Kylie, please take note of that. Thank you. All right. On item twenty-one, we have approved and authorized the chair to sign and send a letter supporting the Delnart Trail Alliance and their request for grant funding for the Craig's Creep Loop Trail, as requested by Supervisor Cowan. Supervisor?
So at the economic summit, no, I got the copy. Joe Gillespie spoke about what they're doing with the Delnart Trail Alliance, and it's pretty exciting, and they're out there raising funds. So he talked about, I asked what we could do, and he said letters of support that he could send out when he is talking to the public and going after certain monies and grants. So this is just basically a general letter, but we talked about it before the meeting. I think we're going to ask Mr. Gillespie to come back and maybe do the same presentation to the board that he did at the economic summit, and talk about the trails and everything that they're doing. So I'll make sure I make that call today, and in the meantime, if we can just approve a letter that we can get to him, that would be awesome.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Well, let's go ahead and open this up for public comment with the idea that this will probably come back before the board for a presentation, possibly as soon as our first meeting in April. Public comment. Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any comments from board members? Okay, seeing none. Does the board wish to table this item until the presentation takes place, or do we want to move forward with directing staff to draft the letter of recommendation?
I don't see any problem with moving forward on this. We've all heard the presentation before.
Okay, very good. Kylie, let's go ahead and pull the vote.
I don't have a motion or a second.
You're right, we don't, do we?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. Okay, we do now.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. And let's go ahead and address item number twenty-two. Approve the request-
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, sir. All right, item number twenty-two, which is approve the request of Tom Kenny to connect assessors parcel number 116-114-010-000 and 116-114-011-000 to the county service area's Madison Avenue lift station subject to the following conditions. Item number one, payment to a fee equal to the original assessment prior to the issuance of the building permit, and number two, a building permit to obtain for the proposed residence as requested by the manager of county service area number one. Who's going to handle this for us, Jay? All right. We seem to be moving a little quicker today. Is it something that you could take up now, or do you want to wait for Heidi?
Oh, I can wing this one.
Very good.
So obviously, the county service area is our sewage system that is in the area of Washington Boulevard. And in the case of this one, excuse me, he's making the request to connect to that system for, I believe, two properties, and as such, the, would pay the fees and for connection and future use.
Okay, very good. Questions from the board for Jay? Okay, at this time, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion on the table?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for item number twenty-two.
So moved?
Second.
And a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right. All right. We're going to move back to our timed items, and our 10:15 timed item is receive a presentation on the Mental Health Services Act Innovation Plan, Text to Grow, presented by Heather Snow. Good morning, Heather. Good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you. Same to you. So it was in June of last year, the board approved the three-year Mental Health Service Act plan, and the innovations funding is a separate piece of that that requires a special process. So we go through that in order to use those funds. Innovation projects are required by the state to be what they say, novel and unique. So we look at new ways to address prevention and early intervention or treatment of mental health issues. The projects can only receive innovation funding for three years and then have to be sustainable after that fact. And I'm excited to bring an innovations plan to you guys because we've only done one so far. It was Coastal Connections. It's been sustained with other funding since then, but it started as an innovations plan. So I'm here with Angela Glor today from First Five, and we've been working together for about a year now to work on an innovations project, and the project is called Text to Grow. G-R-O-W stands for Gathering, Resource, Outreach, and Wellness. So this plan proposes to infuse some social and emotional support components into some of the work that has been done around literacy, and Angela will tell a little bit more specific about that. Supervisor Cowan has been hearing about this plan for a long time now because she's on the local mental health board. So we've met the first few steps of this process by having a community planning time period and having the local mental health board approve it. We're hopeful to get your approval today, and then the final step will be to have the state approve it, and then we can make it happen. So I'll be here for questions if you have after Angela.
Very good.
Thanks.
Good morning, Angela. How are you today?
I'm well, thank you. I'm Angela Glor. I'm Executive Director of First Five. Good morning to you all. And first, I just want to say how grateful I am to the Department of Mental Health for their willingness to work with First Five on this project. They met with me many times, you know, to learn about what we heard from families and what we wanted to do to meet the needs that we heard about. So two years ago, the Delnarts Literacy Project team talked with 27 families from across Delnart County about their lives and early literacy. We heard a lot about books, reading, and a lack of knowledge about what kindergarten readiness looks like, but we also heard about long, nonstop days, mental health issues in immediate and extended families, feelings of isolation, and an inability to connect with services that families needed. Out of community and parent meetings, we identified a need for more tools around school readiness, mental health, and parent support. The innovation project you have before you is a result of multiple rounds of research, prototypes, and pilot projects. We currently have parents throughout the county using the Ready for K texting program, and we consistently get good feedback about it. Ready for K sends three texts a week with age-specific information about child development, early numeracy, and early literacy for zero-to-five-year-olds. It is currently used in forty U.S. states and Singapore. The MHA innovation funding will allow us to build on this evidence-based program to provide family strengthening, mental health prevention via text. The Text to Grow project will co-create new content with parents and providers. The new content will be added to Ready for K's existing child development and school readiness content to provide localized connections to services, mental health support, and culturally appropriate content. We will be guided by the five protective factors for strong families, the emerging science of resilience and hope, and of course, needs identified by local parents. Our involvement with Parent Power, the creator of Ready for K, has already led the way to other counties in California adopting Ready for K through their First Five commissions. Delnart is being watched very carefully by our First Five partners across the state who see promise in localizing Ready for K with connections to local programs, services, and community needs. This work is truly innovative, and I hope you will support this project. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have about Ready for K and the Text to Grow innovation project. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Very good. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment then. Okay, seeing none, go ahead and bring it back to the board. Please.
I'd like to say, my name's Chuck Orton, and I'd say something about First Five. Two years ago, they had a beard contest.
A what?
A beard contest.
A beard. You're doing perfect on that.
And so this lady I know, I went there, and they all lined up. Santa Claus was to my left, and I beat Santa Claus, so I didn't get any presents that year, but that was nice of them to have that over there.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other public comment today? Go ahead and bring it back to the board. Is there a motion on the table?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. You know, just briefly, Angela, I want to make mention before we leave this topic, that the efforts of First Five and also the county, along with the school district, around literacy and three-year-old 23, especially as observed through our last two economic summits, have been extremely important to the education of our community, especially drilling down into the lower grade levels, the pre-K, pre-kindergarten years, is extremely important. So these programs, like the texting programs that we've launched in the past and the ones that we're exploring now, I think are going to be extremely important in getting kids ready for kindergarten and having parents aware of what it takes to have a kinder-ready child. So very appreciative of those efforts and thinking outside the box to take advantage of innovation funds, and Godspeed on making that happen. All right, we've got a few minutes before our next timed item, so I'd like to go ahead and move to item number twenty-three, which is approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support for the Talawadini Nation for fiscal year 19 appropriations to secure operational dollars to keep the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery up and running. And that's requested by myself through, actually, I see one of our friends from the Talawadini Nation here today. I went ahead and put this on the agenda because the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery is one of the last operational private hatcheries in the state of California. The Talawadini Nation has been helping these efforts through, actually, the purchase of the hatchery several years ago to help keep it afloat. It is one of the crown jewels of our region that helped keep Chinook and Steelhead populations alive and well and fishable and catchable in the Smith River, and I think this is an excellent opportunity for the Talawadini Nation to pursue those funds to help keep that hatchery viable. Bree, I don't know if you want to make any comments to the board today, but I'd love to have them if you're willing.
My name is Breanna Fraley. I'm the Chief Governance Officer of the Talawadini Nation. I was not prepared to speak today, but I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for considering this letter of support to go forward to Congress for appropriations. It would go to our local senate, our local representative Congressman Huffman, and it's for the FY19 appropriations into the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And so back in 2012, the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Board at the time approached the Talawadini Nation Tribal Council, like you had said, and said, "We need help." And so the reason why they needed help was overburdened some regulations that were being put upon the hatchery for operations. So they had to work with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to create a five-year management plan. And on top of that, NOAA, the federal government, imposed the requirement of a genetic management plan, and so that ran to the tune of over $75,000. And so being good partners in the community, the Talawadini Nation Tribal Council understood the importance of sustaining fish catch on the Smith River, just so the general public is aware that Steelhead are only catch and release if they're wild, and you can only take a hatchery fish. And so it's really good for the community. It brings in anglers from all over the nation. Every year, we host an annual Steelhead Derby. This year, we had forty teams, and it made the front page of the paper that a women's team beat all the men out, so we were pretty happy about that. And that fundraiser brought in over $50,000. So through our partnership with the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Board since 2012, the tribe has been able to secure Bureau of Indian Affairs maintenance dollars, and so that goes to purchase fish food and the coated wire tags and the other facilities maintenance dollars. So today specifically for the FY19 appropriations, we're requesting that there be a permanent increase into the Department of Interior's Trust Resource Fund for operational funds in the amount of $290,000 to be able to sustain operations, and will continue to seek maintenance dollars funds. So it will be a good, solid budget to keep the hatchery going. And just a side note, in 2013, there was an economic feasibility study done about what the hatchery contributes to the local community, and it said about $700 is brought in per one Steelhead to local communities through restaurants, hotels, fishing guides, and whatnot. So it's a great value to the community, and we desperately need it within Delnart County. So, sheninla.
Thank you, Bree.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right. Let's go ahead with our 10:25 timed item, which is a presentation on Last Chance Grade by Jamie Mattioli from Caltrans. Good morning, Jamie. Welcome.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm happy to have this opportunity to present an update on Last Chance Grade, so I will be going over a few things for you today. What is the recent storm damage and repair activities and monitoring activities that we have out there to keep folks safe on the road? What is the status of our geotechnical, preliminary geotechnical studies? Talk about- Talk about a newly-approved $5 million that we will be using for environmental studies. And I'll talk about the risk assessment that's ongoing right now. What is it and where are we at? And finally, a look at the public engagement effort that will happen in the coming months. So, this is an overview of, I believe this is on, Last Chance Grade, an aerial view, and we'll talk more about it. I don't know if my mouse is clicking here. Doesn't appear to be. There. Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. So, I went over the overview already. This is a look at Last Chance Grade from the air. The blue area is defined, all these areas define the different landslides that are out there. The large blue area is called the Mulan, and it's a slowly-moving earth flow where you see the undulating road. And then you get into the yellow area and the orange areas, which are the broken formation, where you have more activity and the slide's been moving faster. So, I will be focusing today on this repair discussion in that yellow area, which is the Wilson Creek Wall area, and that middle area, which is South Last Chance Grade Slide. And then the one on the far north, at the left of the page, is the Northern Last Chance Grade Slide area. And I'll take a tour of, through photos, of the recent activities and construction. Oh, I do have Sebastian Cohen. He's here with us today. Sebastian is the area construction engineer for Del Norte County, and he's also a former project manager for Last Chance Grade. He's on the team, and he manages storm damage for construction. So, he's a valuable team member for us. I want to talk about the movement in 2018. We haven't had a lot of movement. We've had a mild water year so far. Since October 1st, at one location where we have, we have equipment monitoring 24/7, we've only seen half an inch of movement at that location. That's at the ski jump, where we've seen the history of the grade, about 40 feet of horizontal movement and 30 feet of vertical movement. It's dropped 30 feet. So, this year has been a slow year, which is good because there's a lot of work going on, so it's good that we haven't had movement. There have been things, there have been new cracks, new issues like that, definitely. And on monitoring. So, we're continuing to upgrade our monitoring system. Crescent City was gracious enough to enter an agreement with us to mount equipment on their wastewater treatment facility, and that is relaying a signal back to the grade where we've set up a camera. The signal strength isn't what we hoped it would be, what we expected it to be, so we need to install more relays to actually catch that signal at a different location and send it to our cameras. And Sebastian is now engaged in getting contractors in on that effort. There's a couple contractors we have on our list, and we're going through that process. So, we're working hard on that. That's a priority for us. And there's this new technology. We have all the other monitoring systems in place. Boots on the ground is the most important, folks 24/7 during storm events. Aerial photography. So, Sebastian flew up in a helicopter with Coast Guard and took aerial photos. I don't know if I can play this. Oh, thank you. So, we can just play for a minute, perhaps? Yeah, thank you very much. So, this is a video. It's not actually a video of the flyover. This is a 3D model that was produced just using still photos that Sebastian was taking as he's flying over in the helicopter. And you can use those photos to generate this 3D model. So, it's a low-cost and fast way of building this model. Usually, you'd have to use LiDAR or something else, which is more expensive and takes a lot longer to process. So, Sebastian can go up regularly in the helicopter, produce this model, and then we could compare the difference between different models, and you could see if there's been changes and what those changes are. So, right there in the screen, we're about the middle of the grade. We started at the south end. We're moving north. And so, we'll talk about the work going on there at that Stewart Wall. We'll talk about that signal, where it's going to. Moving further north here, that's the Soil Nail Wall that was just finished. And we will be building a new wall from the north end of that wall all the way up to this next wall here, Wall 5A, which is getting repaired as well. So, we'll walk through that here in a bit. So, again, we have, for storm damage from 2016 and 17, 27.6 million in construction dollars approved to fund all those repairs. There's also 35 million total to pay for support and right-of-way environmental cost. So, if you recall, this was the damage, the bottom right at the Wilson Creek Wall Slide 2000, winter 2016. We saw that section of road slide down the hill, and we lost a chunk of the roadway. We closed the southbound lane. The picture on the left is a piece of that wall shearing north of where they're standing there. And so, this is the wall just last week. It's, the structural part of it is almost complete, and so there's roadwork that remains tying into the wall. So, this should be coming to completion soon. However, we've identified a need further south of here that we may be putting in another wall, a SECT wall, which is basically just piles. So, we will likely move down further south and remain in the area for some time, and there will likely be a signal here through the summer. Moving north, this is the Stewart Wall, and we had completed this wall last year, and as we were completing it, we identified a need to expand it to the south and expand it to the north. The southern extension is now completed, the structural piece of it. So, roadwork remains, we need to tie into it. So, moving north, that's the northern piece of that wall looking south on the left. And then on the right, this is further to the north, approximately where that wall is going to extend to. And the good news about this extension to the north is it's been designed in such a way that we can have traffic open on both lanes while we're doing construction. We have enough width there. Now, the first step is to get paving done out here so we could put traffic on the road and begin constructing that wall. So, that signal will go away, but it's moving north. So, we will have another signal to take care of construction. This is Wall 3, which is between the two slides. We are repairing that wall. And Wall 5 to the north, we're constructing a new wall that goes to the outside of it. So, that signal at the middle area is moving up here, and this is also the ski jump area. We'll be filling that area as well. So, that signal will remain for some time. Geotech studies. So, the geotech studies, they're needed to refine and validate the project alternatives. We know that there are historic landslides where the project alternatives are intended to go, so we need to study that area, drill holes, and learn about the geology so that our geotechnical specialists can provide their opinion to the team, and we could bring that back to design and refine things. So, we now have a plan for our Phase 1 drilling, and we've begun the environmental process to get that cleared. Our folks have been out there performing studies already, and we're meeting with Green Diamond. A lot of the studies are on their land, and they're helping us get through that environmental clearance. So, we expect to drill this summer. Right now, we plan on 10 boring locations and six seismic refraction mines out there. So, they will be done this summer. And then, the results of those studies will be coming out this fall. There are, they'll be informing us, informing the design. And we're planning for the Phase 2 studies this spring, which are more challenging locations. They'll take longer to get cleared environmentally. There'll be vegetation clearing. It just takes more time to get through. So, we had an additional $5 million approved last week by the CTC. I think folks are aware of that. And this will be used for environmental work. Four major categories. Environmental scoping, which is really the process of bringing the information that we have about the alternatives to our stakeholders and our partners, and coordinating on the alternatives and what alternatives we're carrying forward to be fully studied. So, that's an interactive process, a coordinated process, and that's critical to us. This is a project where it's not really a Caltrans project. It's a project that is a big issue to the community, and we need the entire community to help us solve this. So, Caltrans is helping facilitate and provide the best information we can. We'll begin biological studies, cultural resources studies. We're already engaged in coordinating with the tribal governments on putting together a programmatic agreement and other general studies, sound, air noise, community impacts, that sort of thing. So, we intend to kick off really the environmental process, NIPA and SEQA officially, in the fall when we have the results of those preliminary geotech studies, and we could bring those back and really have a better sense of the alternatives. We've had a chance to go out to the community and engage with the community on what we're carrying forward. The risk assessment. So, what is it? It's really needed to assess the geotechnical risks of each project alternative. So, it was actually required that we perform this by FHWA in our coordination with FHWA to get funding for the project. We had a panel meet onsite on March 13th. Five geotechnical experts from the West Coast were involved, and it's a pretty impressive list of folks. Their resumes are quite impressive. We had folks in charge of geotech for Washington DOT, Oregon DOT. There's a professor, there's an ex-Caltrans employee, and a guy who's a tunnel expert. None of these folks are current Caltrans employees. So, they've met onsite, and they're now working on their report. They're assessing the risks of all these alternatives, and we expect to get that in May, and we'll then roll that out. This is just a photo of the group, the risk assessment team. They're using a virtual reality system. They can visualize the area and the alternatives, and they could kind of move their head and look around and view this area here. And so, this is just a good tool that they're using to visualize the alternatives and the geology, geography. So, again, public engagement is critical. As we get the results of the risk assessment, we'll be rolling this out to our partner group, which is the land management folks, the tribal governments, state and national parks, and Green Diamond, and our stakeholder group. This board is representative on that group, other local governments, and it's a broad group. That's the Huffman's group. So, we'll be scheduling meetings for those two groups, and then a broader public meeting we're planning sometime between July and August to bring the updates. And that was my update.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, you're welcome.
A lot has taken place since you were last here, so really appreciate the update. I think for the public's engagement on this, I know the board's been paying a great deal of attention to this subject. I know we've been taking it to the streets of Sacramento. We've been taking it to the streets of Washington, DC. I really appreciate the presentation today because it helps give a sense of transparency to the public about what's going on with Last Chance Grade, and I know there's been a lot of progress made here the last couple weeks, especially with the announcement from Senator McGuire at the Economic Summit last week to get this biological work started. To me, that was a very impressive move because it essentially takes a lot of things out of sequence, which Caltrans doesn't do, right? So, this is a precedent-setting step for Caltrans to take that environmental work, fund it, and get it started now instead of us having to wait for the full dollar amount. So, very impressed by that move. Comments from the board?
I was going to say the same thing you are, and maybe explain it a little bit more to the public, because I think a lot of people don't understand just the unprecedented that you're taking, that it has never happened before. And that is, the money, when we've got the $5 million last year and they got the $5 million that was approved last week, is being spent on these studies, and that is not normal. Normal, the project is approved, and then it goes out, and that's just an added timeframe where you guys have made it work and got the approval to do it ahead of time, which is huge. And I think people need to understand this has never happened, nor has any money ever really been put towards the actual alternate routes, which is being done. So, all this stuff has happened recently or over the last couple of years, and it's a big step moving forward. And I think it's hard for people to think or see that we're moving forward. They don't understand that, and it's big. And I just want people to kind of, I want to say it out loud so people understand, some big steps, huge steps are being taken. And I appreciate all the hard work you're doing now and that Sebastian has done in the past and all of Caltrans and everybody who's involved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jamie, just one question. I noticed that you had the helicopter out there.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if it could be done easier and cheaper with drones?
That's been discussed. Sebastian, I don't know if you have thoughts. I think the easy, what I understand is, yes, you can.
Sebastian, please, a first of the dice.
Yes, Sebastian Cohen with Caltrans. And the answer to your question is yes, and we are doing that. That is, that's what Jamie meant by that technology is now, that tool is now in our toolbox. We did that via a helicopter, but we have used that consultant to now train us, and we're going to be able to do it via drones. And what's impressive about what he showed you is not just that it's, it looks neat, but there's actual elevations behind those pictures. So, and that's what he meant by it's not just pictures. There's actual DTM or digital, DEM, Digital Elevation Model behind that. So, there's a surface. So, we can go up, fly it, and then come back two months later, or a month later, fly it again, and do what we call change detection. And it actually can tell how much has moved in what area and give us a vector and where it's moving. So, it's actually a very impressive, relatively cheap technology that we've now included in our arsenal of tools to monitor Last Chance Grade, so.
Thank you.
Sure. And so, I am, my new area is Del Norte County for all of construction projects as well as all emergency projects. So, if anyone has any questions, just as before, I'm supporting him on Last Chance Grade, but I, any issues on Del Norte County, on state highways, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you, Sebastian. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, I just want to echo the thoughts of Supervisor Cowan, that how this, how this money layering is working out to our advantage to keep things moving, you know, to our, to our, to our goal. So, as long as we keep, keep that funding one step ahead, that we can keep moving without any kind of interruption, which I think is a great thing. And I have to applaud Caltrans on keeping our road open. You know, that commitment has been made and kept, and we're very appreciative of that because whatever happens, that road has to be kept open until we have an alternative. So, that's what people need to recognize.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Let's open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Jamie, absolutely. Please, Chuck.
Thanks for letting me speak again.
No worries.
March 15th, Southeast Paper. That was on the front page, and a couple March 15ths ago, I had my stroke, and they flew me to San Francisco and kept me alive. One, when I got out of the Army in 1968, my uncle and Mr. Hemmingson on North Coast Paving. My son, also, Jerry, worked for Caltrans up in Iowa. Broke his back going to work. But you know, all know where Damnation Creek is, naturally. And so, when you go up Slaughterhouse Road, when I was a kid, you know, that's where you drove through right along the bus. And naturally, that 10 miles that goes through the redwoods into Damnation Creek. And like I said, they didn't have all these $5 million here and $5 million there and all this other stuff. And it seemed like, I don't know, that everybody talks about environmentalists, well, we're all environmentalists in some way or another, you know? But they're going to have to cut a couple trees, but it's something in my lifetime here, I'm 72, to see how this goes, you know? And I'm glad these guys got a job, and I'm glad they study it, but to actually see it, how they've done this right here, and it amazes me. But thanks for letting me talk.
You're welcome. All right. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Jamie, just one final thing before we close this discussion item. I just want to say thank you. I know Lori and I have been in conversations with Matt Brady, who's Region 1 Director, about the change in the director of the State of California for Caltrans. I know Lori Berman has now moved over from the California Transportation Commission to Caltrans, and we've kind of lost a little bit of momentum I thought we had behind Malcolm Doertie, who had made this a top priority in the state of California for this fix, an alternative route. You got anything to add to that? Because I know you guys have had a meeting recently, bringing Lori up to speed. Why don't you tell us a little bit about that before we close this out?
Yeah, happy to. So, Lori and District Director Matt Brady and Sebastian and I had a meeting, was it just two weeks ago? And we met over video conference, and we ran through a presentation of Last Chance Grade, and we went through these same issues here today. What are the important issues? Why is this important to the community? What are the... What are the major concerns? What are we doing? And she understands that this was a high priority for Malcolm and that there's no change in the priorities. She understands that it's important to the district, important to the state. So she just basically said, keep on doing what you're doing. She appreciates it and she knows that it's important that she works closely with stakeholders and elected officials here. There's a tentative meeting planned, I think, for an onsite visit. So yeah, this, this project continues to be important statewide.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, thank you again.
I think it was May 30th?
May 30th.
May 30th? Okay.
Okay.
And thank you for keeping us informed.
Absolutely.
That was my last conversation with Matt. I'll echo Chair Howard and just thank you. I mean, as soon as we reached out to you and our concerns and saw that, you guys were already on top of it and helping us to get communications, which is really important. Because like Chris says, we became really close to Malcolm. I think we saw him every time we were in SAC and he was always open and available to us and that was very comforting.
Yeah.
So to make sure that continues with Ms. Berman is really important.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you again, Jamie. Really appreciate your time for coming up from Humble today.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sebastian. Really appreciate it. All right, we're gonna go ahead with our 10:35 timed item. We're a little bit behind, but I see Samantha's in the audience today. Good morning, Samantha. And your friends are certainly welcome to come up too with you if they, if they'd like.
We don't fight.
No? Yeah.
Do you want this back?
Please introduce yourself and who you're representing today.
Okay, I'm Samantha Fuller. I'm a senior at the high school. I'm the president of Delnort High School, or of Delnort High School's Japan Club. I have with me, this is Erin Hernandez, he's my secretary, and then this is Jennifer Cook, she's my treasurer, and then of course I have a few other wonderful club members with me today. To say that the relationship between Delnort High School and Takata High School in Rikuz and Takata Japan is humbling and moving to our youth is beyond an understatement. In 2016, I was able to visit Takata High School and connect with these people along with seven other Delnort High School students. Post my visit, we now share a bond and friendship that will always be held close. Aside from the relationships we've built, I've also gained skills such as strength and preparedness. The citizens of Rikuz and Takata showed me the purpose of optimism, which I've been able to apply to my own life. Despite losing, these people losing entire community, they were overall more thankful for what they do have, opposed to being angry for what they don't have. Since then, I have been faced with personal hardships that have, which have required me to put this skill to use. It is extremely easy for me to say that I consider this strength in my everyday life as each day I find a place where it is applicable. Nevertheless, the obvious skill gained is tsunami and overall natural disaster preparedness. Many people consider this, however, to what extent. Visiting Rikuz and Takata, I saw an entire community completely washed away. This was heart wrenching as people would point out, this is where my house was, or this is where I sat for countless hours waiting for help, making the experience real. Natural disasters are often difficult to grasp unless you experience it yourself. Most people assume that they will not be a victim until the day that they are. Not only does Delnort County youth want to help Rikuz and Takata rebuild and grow, but the small Japanese community also wants to help us prepare and protect us using their firsthand experience. As of now, majority of our Japan club is yet to visit Rikuz and Takata. However, this doesn't restrict them from being involved in the relationship. Roughly half of our club was able to meet the students from Takata High School last year. These relationships formed as they, and they now feel a deep pull to grow closer. Furthermore, there's a large portion of students in the group who are freshmen, meaning that they have not yet met the students or been able to visit. As a senior who is going away next year, I am thoroughly humbled by how eager this group of students are, even if their only connection is through letters and delayed text messages because of their different time zones. The connections between Delnort High School and Takata High School truly is what you see on social media. They're constantly laughing, connecting, and of course, taking selfies. However, it's deeper. We're all different people. It's true to say that we hardly speak the same language, but as Amia Miller, the woman who made this truly happen, would say, just put the teenagers together. You'll be inspired by the different ways that they can connect. Before Kamomi, the both who started it all, I'm not really sure, I wasn't really sure what it meant to have a sister city, but now I couldn't really imagine my life without one. The benefits this can bring to Delnort County are immense. It's true to say that this will take time away from other projects. However, the benefit is much larger than the cost. I, for one, will not allow this relationship to die down, even after I go to college. This is only the start and if our relationship only touches a handful more, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. That was beautiful, Samantha.
Thanks.
Would your friends in the club like to say anything to the board today?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I said it all, apparently.
Very well done, Samantha.
Thank you.
I know, I know the board, I think has fairly galvanized with this, especially with Supervisor Berkowitz and Supervisor Cowan's return, along with Mayor Enscore, who's in our audience today, galvanized to really follow through on the youth's request to develop this sister city relationship with Rikuz and Takata.
Right, right.
I'm optimistic that this will happen. I know the delegation is committed also. They arrive on April 15th, so soon enough. I, I do want to express our welcome to all the youth of Delnort High School and hope the club could carry that message to participate on April 16th at 6:00 PM at the Cultural Center.
Yep.
But I think, I mean, this, this process is, cannot be understated that a connection was made and you touched on Kamomi, how important that relationship is, especially that important piece that I know Supervisor Berkowitz and Supervisor Cowan saw with emergency preparedness, specific to tsunamis.
Mm-hmm.
And if we could gain anything, just one thing out of that relationship with Rikuz and Takata.
That's enough.
That's, that's the big thing, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. I'm thankful to watch it move forward as someone who was really, really touched by it. To be the last class that went over and after I graduate, no one has gone, it's kind of nice to watch it keep going and go deeper into the community and know that it's not, it's not stopping at me. It's, it's continuing.
You know, when I was there, I just took a picture, a simple picture of an area that only someone who had been there would know and I sent it to Griffin in Chicago. Yeah. And it was kind of, it was kind of, the conversation after was neat, but you know, she was able to go over and be one of the first group and it's still with her, you know?
Right, exactly.
Oh my God, you're there, you know?
Right.
And I can see with you, it's gonna continue the same thing. It won't ever go away in your mind, in your heart.
Yeah, it's completely altered my life. I mean, I came home and I had to apply it to my life pretty immediately and so in order to be able to do that, and I wouldn't be who I am today without it, hands down.
You know, to show how important this is, when we were there, this huge shrine to tsunami and all of Delnort County's memorabilia and all of the schools and all of that cemented that connection.
Right.
Between sister cities and sister high schools.
Right.
It's fantastic and I hope that you're able to get over there and, and basically see all of that.
Yeah.
All of you.
Yeah. Amen.
Certainly. All right. I would love to open it up for public comment. If there is any public comment with the presentation from the Japan Club today. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board and just thank you for taking the time out of your school day to come down here and talk to us about the importance of that sister city relationship and tsunami preparedness.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Love your energy, guys. Youth are so important to us and our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.
How can I say?
Yeah. Yeah. Very good. So we're just a little bit behind, but we're gonna go ahead and move on to our 10:45 timed item, which is a cannabis working group presentation. I believe Jesse is joining us today for that. Good morning, Jesse. Come on down, The Price is Right.
Morning. Thank you. Okay. Thanks again for making the working group possible. Everybody on the group appreciates the opportunity to make this happen. So this is a report from our March 14th meeting. Our next meeting is tomorrow, 10 o'clock. Love to see some members of the board come to the meeting if possible, even if just to observe. So I have this rough draft report that I sent to you guys and I didn't make time to really clean it up, so I'll just read parts of it and then hopefully get some questions from the board. At our March 14th meeting, we continued our discussion on setbacks and locations for retail. The most important thing to get done is to find all of, all the sensitive location points that need to be on this map. So find all the schools, daycare centers, not including family daycares that are in a home, youth centers, which are defined as playgrounds, arcades, parks with installations for kids, ball courts, et cetera. So as, as we get as many of these as possible on the maps, then it will be clear what the setbacks need to be and how many stores there are actually room for, talking about retail cannabis locations. Heidi from Community Developments, working on a computer spreadsheet that we can all access and add locations to these lists so that we're not duplicating. And then, so it's just sort of a lot of groundwork, footwork, getting around to do this. So that's sort of the hang up right now. It's just creating an accurate map so we can get a visual of what's going on and then instead of just kind of picking numbers out of thin air that may have to be adjusted later. So this will take into account its location to commercial zoning and things like that, making sure we're not wiping out all of the viable commercial zoning with these setbacks.
Any idea of that might come to fruition?
I don't. I really don't. So we're trying to, on top of this, at our next meeting, we're gonna be trying to come up with some solid timelines for things like this, but as far as creating this map, I'm not sure how long it will take. You know, I'm guessing several weeks at least from this point. I'm not sure where Community Development is in creating this spreadsheet. I haven't seen it yet. So I'm not really sure where the progress is with that. That's just a matter of manpower and doing it. So it's hard for me to predict, I couldn't say. Yeah, no problem. Thank you for asking. So just kind of repeating from last time, looking at the map so far, it looks like it would be difficult to fit more than five stores and still meet all the setbacks and distance requirements between the stores. So this gets, backing up a little bit, this, a big part of our discussion is how to deal with a cap on a number of stores and whether or not to have a cap on a number of stores. And I hear the board preferring to have some kind of cap. There are several members of the working group that don't have any problem with having a number for a cap on the stores. So I think it's workable. I just think the legal details need to be sorted out and explained. Joel wasn't present at our last meeting, so some of those kind of legal questions, you know, we weren't able to ask at our last meeting. But, you know, I think kind of either way it wouldn't matter because there's not going to be room for dozens of stores in the county anyhow. But probably realistically, the group feels like that five would also be plenty of sufficiency, would be sufficient number of locations. Also, this sort of enters into that is considering whether or not we're gonna include a retail delivery service. And then we didn't spend a lot of time getting into that discussion, but we think it's appropriate probably to include retail delivery services. It's part of, you know, it works under state law. It's part of a retail license, retail outlet license ability to do retail, do delivery services. There's a lot of rules around it. Another thing with delivery is you don't have to have an actual storefront. You have to have a facility, like a commercial facility where you run your business out if you can't run it out of your home or your car or something. But you don't necessarily have to allow retail access, like a storefront. And so if we're gonna have delivery services that don't have a storefront, then they probably shouldn't be included in a cap. Let's say we, say we want to have four stores as a cap, but then we want, maybe want to be able to allow a delivery service as a fifth or sixth business to be able to compete with a storefront in a, in a way that's more competitive perhaps, without having the overhead of a retail storefront. So I think that's important for the market to work. It gives more opportunity for more people to enter the business in the market and have different kinds of businesses. There's also still a lot of stigmas, I think, for people who want access to cannabis. They don't want to go to a retail outlet. They prefer to have a discreet delivery. And they have to be delivered to a physical location. You can't do parking lot deals, things like that. So it's generally to your house. Or you could probably have it delivered to a, maybe a restaurant even. I don't know the rules on that, but it has to be a physical location. And delivery vehicles, they can't have advertising on them. You can't have cannabis advertising on any vehicles of the State of California, state law, so it wouldn't, it would be an out of sight type of operation.
What about packaging?
Yeah, all cannabis products have to be packaged before they meet the retailer.
I get that, the actual packaging itself is related to that.
Sure.
But packaging then that it's put into to be delivered.
Yeah, there's another layer of packaging that's, that's supposed to meet some child safety standards. And then at that point, it also gets a track and trace sticker so that each product, each individually packaged product is entered in the California state track and trace system and can be accessed by state officials. So the only, so this is just me speaking personally on this idea of a cap. My only concern is that sometimes when investors see an opening in an area where there's a hard cap, then they kind of rush in to just grab those available locations and sit on them and then jack up the rent for everybody else. So that's, that's sort of the economic reason personally why I, I don't like the idea of numbers on caps, but you know, there's lots of ways to mitigate that problem, I think. Okay, yeah, so we came up with a good, simple tax system in the final half hour of our meeting and we'll probably be focusing on that for the most part in our next meeting. So in between then and now, the State Assembly, California State Assembly has introduced a bill that would eliminate the cultivation tax altogether and reduce the retail excise tax from 15% to 11%, which I think, when you add that excise tax to our California state sales tax, it becomes more in line with Oregon's cumulative tax of 17%. So this is a big deal. It's a really big deal and it's expected to pass. It has a lot of support and it makes a lot of sense because of what's going on in transition time right now. There's a lot of difficulty with the legal market getting up and running, competing with the black market and such, and so at the state level, they're recognizing the tax burden's too high. And I think it's good for localities. It leaves a lot more room for some local taxes. Instead of trying to recover money from the state, we can tax it directly and not have it be such a huge, you know, adding a little, a few extra percent or whatever it may be at the county level, there's a lot more room for it if this passes. So it changes the dynamic completely of the direction we want to go with our voter initiative.
I spoke to Congressman Wood's office about it.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Recharge, I'm not gonna come back to after that, but yeah, he was, he walked on that bill.
Right.
He was supportive of it and it made sense.
Yeah, I think they, they're confident that it has enough support that it could pass.
I think that's back to Senator Wood's office.
Okay, right, right. So, yeah, I think that plays in perfectly with our idea, the working group's idea that the board should adopt it, some kind of adjustable tax that's popular in common with other localities. It allows the board to adjust tax rates within a certain range that's approved by the voters and which makes a lot of sense because nailing down one number is gonna be really difficult and it's gonna be a lot of flux, as you can see, the state's considering making big changes to their numbers. So for retail, we can put this idea of about 2% to 6% additional sales tax. It would be for the county on retail sales. And a cultivation tax is somewhere around a dollar a square foot for outdoor cultivation and, you know, maybe $3 to $6 for indoor cultivation, different type of farming altogether. There's, hasn't been a lot of good examples for taxing the other component, other parts of the industry. So you have processing, which is generally like your trimming of cannabis, distribution, which is a big one. It's required transportation, testing, plant stock nurseries, but there isn't really, there's a really estate setup system for taxing at these levels that we can piggyback off of. So that's the idea with retail. There's already a system for that. There's a, the Board of Equalization reports and things like that that metric your sales. And then with cultivation, taxing by the square foot, which is consistent with the permit that you apply to the state for, that's easy to do. So until there's a better accessible track and trace system, it's easier to do cultivation, I think, by the square foot, by the area versus by the production, because there isn't really a good way to measure the production, honestly. The state's track and trace system is a little strange in that localities can't access the data. And so you have to have your own track and trace system that runs parallel in some way. They're trying to figure out a way to connect them. Humble has, is working on their own, but it's a big expensive system. And so it's not something that Delmar's going to be able to afford to operate right in the beginning. Most localities aren't adopting and creating their own track and trace system at this time. But as they get that developed, I think it'll be easy software to transfer over. There's a lot of business focusing on that software development right now. I don't know what's going on with the state. I don't understand the reasons of why it's not accessible to the state or to localities, maybe because of privacy issues. I'm not sure. I haven't researched that. I don't know if they're planning on changing it. So I don't know if the only solution for localities to track stuff is to develop their own system, which may become cheaper and simpler in the near future. So that's the idea with tax structure. You could get into the details of the other systems, manufacturing, distribution, things like that. You could tax them when you have an access to the track and trace system for what they're doing, for their work. It would be an easy way to access what they're doing. Otherwise, you just have to go after grocery receipts, just like any other business. Which I'm not sure. That'd be kind of a legal thing. I don't know how counties get into that, so. So, yeah, that's definitely a lot to think about and what's going on in the State Assembly adds to that. But I think that an adjustable tax makes sense and some feedback on numbers that we can kick around would be good. And then I talked a little bit about cultivation limits and numbers, but we didn't talk about that as a group for the working group. So those are just kind of my personal thoughts and data that I sent to you guys so you could get an idea of what cultivation generates, growth, numbers, and what kind of taxes you could expect to generate out of that. And then just sort of my final thoughts are, I'll just read this. "Given the limited resources of staff, I think it's important that we have an informal exchange of ideas and questions with these reports and at the group meetings. I think it's vital and appropriate that all of you come to the meetings and ask some questions. It would also be helpful to receive questions from you before the meetings because it helps me to understand what's important and how to find consensus in our group. Joel, County Council, doesn't have time to rewrite things too many times. So we need to get this right through an open communication with requests for specific information from you." At this pace, I personally, I don't think we're going to get to a cultivation ordinance this year. But if that's the intention, to get all of it done, I think we need a little more help from members of the board, just with legwork and things like that. Let's see. Anyway, I think you've all been doing this the right way so far, for sure. And, but now I think it's probably time to just be a little more comfortable with having a back and forth so that we, because if we have to wait to get things into ordinance form, obviously, before the board can give input, it won't ever get done. Not cost too much money.
Sure. Jesse, in that spirit, I'll kind of kick off with a few questions. It's my understanding right now that the board will probably see here in the next month something along the lines for the personal use piece.
Right.
And in addition, something along the lines of taxation, as we need to move that towards the May ballot or the June ballot. So.
November.
November ballot, but we need to have.
Be done by May, I think.
Done by May. So thank you for that correction. With that idea and those two pieces moving forward fairly rapidly, I've spoken to Deputy County Counsel about that. It sounds like he's specifically on track. You're looking for feedback from us on probably some of those two pieces. My question for you then, especially on the individual use, is, I don't recall, is the group, working group leaning to inside, outside? What's the current?
Sure, yeah, we have both considerations for inside and outside. The county has the ability to ban outside cultivation, but not inside.
The working group is recommending both?
Yes, both.
How is the working group discussing the smell, for lack of a better term?
For the most part, we came to that just with setbacks. And in terms of, that falls under a nuisance creation. And so Joel would probably be able to answer that maybe a little better than me. But we tackled that just through setbacks exclusively. And something that's similar to the way the county deals with keeping pigs. The garden needs to be closer to your own home than to your neighbor's home. But in terms of quantifying smell and what that means, it's very difficult. And it's gray and there isn't some, there isn't a meter for it.
Sure.
It's not a threshold. So it falls into the same way the county deals with any nuisance. And so honestly, probably Joel could answer that specifically.
And the reason I bring that up, I've been talking to a lot of folks in the district recently. I've had that opportunity to get around a lot. And so I'm really getting good sense from at least folks in District Three what they want to see and don't want to see, specific to these ordinances.
Sure.
And one of the issues that came up, specific to the smell, had to do with the southern portion of my district where there were some inside growing operations taking place. I don't know the number of plants or anything like that. But specifically during the summer periods when the peak, or the height, I guess, of growing indoor was taking place in this operation, they had fans ventilating out. Those fans were blowing the air and that smell right in the next door window of a neighbor's house. So that's, I want to make sure that those concerns are worked through in the working group. Because I don't know, obviously, driving through the Illinois Valley during certain times of the year, it's very robust. But what does it take? How many plants does it take to produce what would be essentially offensive? You touched on it a little.
Sure. Yeah, it's square footage mostly, more than, I mean, so six plants is the recreational limit. It can be argued differently for medical, but, so the ordinance would be just dealing with square footage caps for the most part. And so it's the size of the garden. That's what's relevant, not so much the number of the plants. Because plants can be any size, really. Tiny to gigantic, so. Filtering systems, sure. So some municipalities have included requirements like that for indoor cultivation and even for greenhouses, too.
I've said that. I want every, I don't want to see any outdoor. I want it all indoor. I want filtration systems, but again, it's me. That's my personal preference. There are systems that they can do that to block the smell, and I think it's important, especially in a neighborhood. If we're going to be able to allow them to grow those six plants in a home and we're in these small areas, I think that's important. And the same with if a child is in the house, you know, how are we going to address that as well?
I think a lot of those, we had a lot of discussions about those kinds of things, actually. And I learned a lot about how law works and how county law works and what you can do and what you can't do, what you can enforce and what you can't enforce. And that's what it came down to, is like, all these kinds of neat ideas that seem great in terms of control end up generating really a lot of costs to the county. And so I think, we heard a lot from staff saying, you know, be careful about what, how detailed you get in your requirements and make sure it's enforceable and it doesn't end up generating a lot of costs or making requirements that maybe aren't necessarily legal even, you know, like.
Where does that enforcement lie and what costs are we specifically talking about?
Sure. So I think a lot of localities have done things that are really specific like that and then they get sued right away because, and maybe they calculate that in because they can afford to be sued or whatever. So I'm, right. And that's, I think, why county staff is protective of the county in that way. But it also kind of limits what you can do. It makes you feel like you just want to ban everything permanently because it's so expensive to regulate things directly. But, so, yeah, so specifically speaking about a filtration system, yeah, then you'd get into, it'd be inspections, right? Like non, it'd be mandatory inspections. It'd be people would consider that invasive. It's not a business. It's just their personal hobby in their house, you know? So I think what it comes down to is that when a complaint happens, then it gets investigated and then resolution has to take place. And the sheriff gets involved maybe, or the ag department gets involved maybe. And so, yeah.
Jesse, at the last meeting, you asked the board to provide direction to the group on a certain question. Let me repeat the question that you wanted answered.
Sure.
Said, "Do we want a comprehensive tax system right away? Or do we want to wait until the industry can become established before we determine what taxes are appropriate?" That's the question you asked the board last meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, for the board, to put this question to the board on the next agenda so that we can get an answer that Jesse wants to have answered. Is that possible?
I don't know. Is it, I'd actually seek input from council before we made that decision, but I'd welcome, welcome to the discussion right now.
The working group will meet tomorrow. And I am optimistic that they'll have a recommendation by the end of that meeting on what to tax and how much. And if we're just crafting, you know, the few sentences about the tax, we can leave all the other stuff about enforcement, penalties, audits, all the things that you'd see in our TOT ordinance, those don't have to go to the public. So if we can just get what to tax and how much, I think we can get it to the next meeting. So this board can consider the recommendation for the amount and the activity and at that time, consider whether you want to do a tax at all. I think the next meeting is, I mean, we got to start pushing a little bit. You know, I think the next meeting is realistic.
I'm just trying to get to the answer that Jesse posed himself of the board, all right? Can we get some kind of construction for the next board meeting? Maybe it can come from Jesse or the board on answering his question that he wanted the board to answer.
So, yes, the board can approach it like direction to staff, kind of making a policy decision. Does the board want to tax at all? I'd like to move a little faster and actually have for the board, hopefully next meeting, introduction of an ordinance. Because it's going to take two meetings to pass this thing. We want to get it to the elections official by May. So, you know, I don't see why the board can't consider both, the idea of the working group's recommendation and the kind of policy decision, does the board want to tax at all at the same.
Yeah, I think as, as the questions come up from the cannabis working group, looking for direction from the board on any of these things, I think the board ought to be able to have that agendized and be able to give an answer that they want. And that can move that process fairly quickly.
I think that's what he's saying, Supervisor, is that they're going to come to us next meeting with the ordinance. They're going to craft that tomorrow.
And the recommendation.
With the recommendation for us to consider. So he would be doing exactly what you're asking, but in a different, further along way.
Well, as long as he gets the question answered, that's all I'm asking.
We could ask the working group chair also. Jesse, I know, please feel free.
Yeah, so thank you for paying attention to that specific question that I sent you all guys. And so it's been two weeks since that question and I'm ready right now. I don't want to wait for another meeting or for it to be agendized. I'm here right now. I'm going to go to our meeting tomorrow morning. And I want to go there knowing what you guys think. So tell me right now individually, you guys want to go for taxes right now or not? I think you could just spill it right now.
I thought it was our understanding that we were trying to get together a tax ordinance to put on the ballot in June. That's what I have been working towards.
And so I just wanted to make sure that the working group wasn't wasting time in doing this.
I believe the understanding was that we were to craft an ordinance to get on the June ballot and we had been talking about the need to be done by May. And it sounds like Joel's on board because he's hoping to have it brought to the board before us.
I'd love to give you an answer on that, but is it on the agenda, County Counsel? Can we give him an answer?
So I think, you know, we've talked a lot about how direction gets given and how the working group functions. I think, you know, from what Supervisor Cowan is saying and what our office understands that our deputy just said is that we're planning to bring something forward. And so, you know, at that time, if it gets voted down completely for the reasons that nobody wants a tax, that would be surprising to us because we would think that it was a waste of our office's time to put the energy into doing that ordinance. And I think by the same virtue, what Mr. Davis is saying is that he doesn't want it to be a waste of the working group's time either. So at least what we're operating on right now, as far as our office, and we're very time constrained. So we are operating under the fact that the board wants to see some sort of an ordinance. Now, as far as voting for anything at this board meeting, that, we don't have it agendized for that, for any sort of a vote on something specific or really even something general. But we have been operating under that direction for some time now. So I think if anyone wants to express that that's not what we should be doing, I think you're free to do so, but under the Brown Act, I don't think we can really be voting on any exact action.
Are you against that, Supervisor Perkowitz? Are you against a tax? Is that what you're trying to say? Or are you for this tax?
Well, are we going to be discussing that at this meeting?
You asked, asked a question. I mean, we're having an open back and forth conversation with the chairperson. We're discussing that he's going to bring taxes tomorrow. We're, he would like to know, I mean, we're all saying, yes, it's our understanding. Or I'm saying, I'm shaking my head. Chair Howard's shaking his head. Our understanding that we are trying to get a tax on the ballot. So I'm just asking you, are you for the tax or are you not for the tax?
Well, I am for the tax.
Okay. And I think I've said that to Jesse and I, I think, you know, we're all in that thing.
How about you, Supervisor Henderson?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to see this go to the ballot. Can we put a tax on the ballot is like a not to exceed, like, so not to exceed 6%, blah, blah, blah. Not to exceed $1 a foot for outdoor, not to exceed $3 a foot for indoor. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, it's a range, so. There's a minimum and a maximum.
Well, I don't know why you need to have a minimum if you have a maximum. I mean.
I guess just to more, just to guarantee that.
That there's going to be something?
That there's be something so you don't get a board that decides they don't want the tax and they can reduce it without taking it back to the people. I think that would be, it'd be for the future, you know, if you got an anti-tax board and to protect the county from that.
Yeah, if that's the kind of direction that you're need, I mean, you brought us a suggestion of 6%, of a dollar a foot, of $3 a foot.
Yeah, sure.
That sounds reasonable if that's what you're coming up with. I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, I'm not trying to complicate it or make it formal or anything. And I think, you know, Bob was requesting it to become a formal issue. But like I was saying, my general idea with this is we just don't have time for that kind of formality. We don't have time to agendize these questions.
Well, it is going to become formal at some point.
It will, definitely, yeah.
But, I mean, if you're looking for, you know, some basic agreement, yeah, if we're going to allow it, then we need to have a tax on it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just, an open back and forth. I don't, I don't, I'm still getting used to how the system works and what is allowed and what isn't and the structure of things. But I would like these meetings to be a little less formal than normal and just be able to have a open, like a public meeting, like a public discussion.
Just one other thing before I totally forget about it. Where and what time is your meeting?
It's right here at 10:00 AM.
In this room?
Right here, yeah. I sit right there.
I watch the videos.
So it's easier for us, Jesse, to have the conversations for here. What gets, and I think maybe we're all doing this. I've only showed up to one of your meetings. But if you had all of us sitting at the meeting and we started having a conversation, that would be an issue.
We could prob, oh, sure, but, yeah, definitely.
And I think that's why you probably don't see us.
I think that you all can, are allowed to attend, though. And I think that you could probably show up and ask a question as a member of the public in the public comment section. That'd be obviously a question for the lawyers. But I think that there is a way for you guys to participate that isn't illegal. I'm pretty sure.
I think participating might be difficult, but listening probably is.
Sure, listening, yeah, whatever the words, yeah.
I like to think that we're doing that here.
Certainly, yeah.
And we're having a robust discussion and exchange that allows you to have a sense of that direction.
Definitely. I can read. Definitely. I can read between the lines and I understand things and I can get to know people.
And I think you've done a pretty good job of it so far because I know County Council has set in motion a course of action from that direction, not only with the working group, but from the board, to move forward with this individual piece and then this taxation piece. I think it's important, and I think we've got very clear direction around that right now.
Definitely.
If you believe the same thing, let me know.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll, we'll continue to discuss.
Yeah, this is great. This is just what I was looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good on the taxes and, um, maybe a little input on, on the cap on the stores. Is that sort of a sticking point with us right now? If we're gonna try to just limit things structurally or if we're just gonna pick a number like four or five? And that would be great for you guys, just to take that load off of us.
So I guess I've always said three. I don't know why. I just have, always said three, but you have brought up questions now. Well, after I had that in my mind, that I've had this for the last year, you talked about the maps. So that's why I was asking you. Because I'm curious now to see the maps, because that might help it. And then I have a question with, it'll go to legal. You know, is there a legal I wrote down? Is, is there any, anything that legally is gonna hurt us if we cap it? You know, I'm trying to do anything we can to not open ourselves up for lawsuits. I mean, that's already happened with that whole mess with the bans and all that. We opened ourselves wide up already once. I don't want that to happen again. So I never thought about there being a legal problem with putting a cap potentially. So that's a question I'd want answered, and I'd like to see the maps. But, yeah, in my head, three.
Sure.
My head, I don't want to see outdoor grows, period. Cultivation, personal, I just don't want to see it. I don't want to see signs on the building that are obnoxious. I don't want to see, you know, I just, right now, medical marijuana has been in existence in this community for a long time, and there are co-ops, and they're not blatantly out there. No one knows. I'd kind of just like to keep it the same way, you know? But that's just me.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, I, I agree on the cap portion. I would like to see a cap. I don't know how that, does that become competitive? Does that, how do we decide who gets, who, who is gonna get that permit to, to distribute? Who's not going to? Is that what's opening us up for lawsuit? Joel, can you weigh in a little bit on this? I mean, that's, that's cer, that's certainly my, my first, uh, my first option would be to have a cap.
So it's, it's fine to say we'll issue three permits or five permits. But we do get into some issues about who gets them. Is it gonna be first come, first served, and then we have the three fastest instead of the three that the market is choosing? Are we gonna do an R F P situation where everybody applies and then the county has to sort it out? That's more kind of, I think, what we talked about before. We have to create really detailed standards and rules and a point system so it's really transparent. Everybody knows why. It can be done. You know, it's a lot of staff work, and then somebody ultimately at the county is saying, okay, you know, you get one and you don't. I don't, I don't love that.
No. Nobody loves that, but on the other hand, I don't, you know, Jesse says, well, he thinks it's gonna level itself out. But, you know, what are we gonna start with? What are we gonna end with?
Yeah, the, you know.
That concerns me.
We had a really fun time, I thought, going through the maps. You know, looking at our.
Would you like to see the map?
Yeah, I, I think that probably that's something that we should do in a board meeting.
We could agendize that for the next working group presentation. I think we're kind of pushing the envelope a little, Joel, right now, having a discussion like this that may or may not be agendized. I don't know how you feel about that, but I'm getting a little concerned. But, you know, council could weigh on that. I just, I don't want to take this.
Are we stepping out of bounds and having a discussion?
I think you're okay as long as you're not taking a voter, I think, like at the moment.
Yeah. And this, this would be the perfect venue to do it in a public session.
You know, there is like concern with the Brown Act and the attendance and participation at the working group meetings. So when this board decided to create the working group, it decided to do so sort of as its own, an agendized meeting group that didn't have board members on it. And that was a decision that the board made that you could change if you want to. If you want to put, you know, two members on it or agendize, you know, doing that, you could do so. But as far as how communication goes back and forth from the working group, and maybe, I think everyone is trying to do that with this update thing. I mean, maybe, maybe there needs to be action items with the updates. Or maybe, you know, when, when these things start coming, like the ordinance that Joel is talking about, you know, maybe people are gonna see more things. I know it's, it's difficult, but if we do have the whole board participating in the whole working group meetings, we probably need to just agendize it as a board meeting as well and then have it be, have it be that. And so if that's what it is, we can, we can do that. But, you know, I think the thought was when it was created that it was going to be that. The board was doing that. Joel was coming, giving the background of the law, and then the board kind of decided to go this other route with the working group. So I think, you know, trying to maybe get some more formalized responses would be helpful for the working group, maybe if there were lists of questions.
Sure.
Something in that, in that van.
You know, Jesse brought up a few things that I think would be really good to talk about now. You know, we're really close to being done with the six plants ordinance. But it sounds like, you know, it might not be what you're expecting or wanting. And I don't want to waste six weeks taking another planning commission and coming back. You know, it is gonna be outdoor with a kind of a sliding scale, a little larger to setbacks. You can observe the more you can do it. If this board wants no outdoor, if that's kind of a consensus or at least three of you, it'd be good for the working group to know now. You know, I think it was 300 square feet was the largest? Six plants and 300 square feet at a 40-foot setback? 60? Yeah, you know, I don't know how far 300 square feet of cannabis will travel smell-wise. But what the working group really kind of came down to was it's legal now and it has a smell, and the community's gonna have to, on some level, deal with it. And then we still have protections in there. If it's this noxious odor that's creating a nuisance and they're just blowing it into people's windows, like, we can enforce that. You know, Dominic can do his thing. Hopefully, it's not, you know, an overwhelming job and everybody's trying.
So 60, you're saying 60 feet from either side? So that takes away a basic lot, a down lot, 60 by 20, so you're taking that away.
You're probably gonna need bigger than a square acre.
So you're looking like a half acre or court, maybe.
Jesse?
Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my mind around it. What does this look like? I just remember pulling into a, you know, being a realtor and pulling in and seeing this short fence and these tall plants. Kids running all over the place when I bought.
We broke it down outdoor into three tiers. The first tier is 25 square feet, which is pretty small.
Five feet.
Five feet. It's 25. Six feet height limit. We put on that. They have to, and that includes with the container and everything. So this small garden needs to be in containers. And I can email you this, the outlines. I've sent them in the past, but it's been a while ago.
No, I, I saw it.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so there's that one, and so that's pretty controlled. And it's, it's for small lots, and so they came up with only a 10-foot setback, which isn't very much. But it allows for, you know, smaller lots. If you get much larger than that in setbacks, then, then you just eliminate a huge percentage of properties altogether from it. And so such a small garden, it seemed like it was reasonable. These numbers can be pretty easily adjusted without having to, I think, wreck the whole ordinance. But I think the whole process of going through the planning commission, even if you change a number, I'm guessing it may have to go back through the whole process. But to, the second tier is 100 square feet, which is a little more traditional. It's what most counties were doing outdoor, going for 100 square feet, so it's about 10 by 10. And there we have a 40-foot setback, which again gets you into properties that are probably close to an acre by that point.
Pretty small.
Yeah.
Mrs. is doing her lots, I mean, 40, 40-foot setback, you could do that in a half acre easily, huh?
Yeah, if it was, if it was sized just right, sure. If, depending on the arrangement of the lot. Yeah, yeah, an acre, a full acre is 200 feet by 200 feet, so you've, you've got fair amount. But a lot of lots aren't arranged like that. So meeting 40-foot setback on a garden that itself is, you know, maybe 10 feet is. But, you know, the numbers can easily be adjusted. And then the third tier is a 300-square-foot garden with a 60-foot setback. Although I remember some ideas of, some people saying 80 would be more appropriate for that one. These are gardens that would be in properties where you, people probably have hundreds and hundreds of feet of clearance with no neighbors. And that's where a garden of that size would be appropriate. And then for indoor, one size, 100 square feet, which is also consistent with a lot of other localities. And then not a lot of other rules and regulations around that indoor garden.
Blocking that from children in the house.
Yeah, there's some stuff for, for the state for outside gardens, but I think when it comes to inside your house, I think it, it starts to overstep the bounds of the county saying what you have to lock and unlock inside the house.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I think that's what I remember. That wasn't something necessarily that's easy for the county to get into. And then building code stuff, instead of having specific building code requirements or permit requirements for it, it would just be like anything else that you would do. If you made a modification to your, to your building or your house or whatever, and that, and you were ordinarily required to get a building permit, cutting a hole, wiring, whatever, you would still have to get this permit. You wouldn't be exempted from it for any reason. But it wouldn't be something that would be required for an inspection.
So Jesse, give us an idea of how many plants we would be talking about in a 25-foot square foot.
It'd be limited to six.
And 100, 100 square foot and 300 square foot.
Sure, well, so record, a person who doesn't have a doctor's recommendation, any resident over 21 is limited to six plants. So that's it. The county's not allowed to grant you more than that. That's a state limit.
So whether you're 100 square feet or 300 square feet or 25 square feet, you're only talking about six plants.
Sure.
Six foot high.
Um, no, yeah, those, the, the height limit ends with the first tier. And so when you have the second tier and larger setback, then there isn't a height limit anymore.
And why is that?
It's just a recommendation. Because you get into, you know, going around measuring things, and it probably doesn't matter. If you have enough setback, then it probably doesn't matter if it's tall and you can see it. It's not gonna affect, it's not gonna create more of a nuisance unless you just don't like seeing it from 40 feet away at the top of a plant. But it's not necessarily gonna create more smell, which I think is the main thing that we're trying to get around. Rather than protecting people from seeing it. You're not allowed to have it in a place that's visible from a public space. That's already state law. So from the street.
So going down 199, I, I, my fear is it's not the state requiring us, requiring us or the county, but somebody's trying to protect their plants, and that's when the big parps go up.
You're seeing commercial though.
And that's where the ugly fence go up, and that's what my concern is.
Those are commercial gardens that you're seeing. Like when you go to Oregon, almost none of that is personal. It's falling under personal regulations. In Oregon, you're allowed to go four plants, right? So those big gardens are all permitted, commercial operations. And that's the fault, frankly, of the state and the county for messing up on the regulations and allowing that kind of thing to happen.
And that's why we're having these conversations, because we don't have that to happen.
So this, this personal thing really is not gonna create what you're talking about. There aren't spaces along the highway where people are gonna be able to have legal gardens that are spilling out and stinking up the highway. I just, my experience, I drive 199 a lot, you know, and there just isn't that kind of zone for it, you know? And it's not legal to have it. But, yeah, you're right. If you have to keep your plants out of sight, then we talked about, should we have ordinances for the fencing or the screening so we don't create ugliness there? But then that's a whole nother layer of rules and regulations to enforce whether or not there's cannabis. So now you got fence regulations, and so I think staff was not excited about getting into fence regulations.
So Jesse, you're looking for board input on those suggestions that you just made. Is that correct?
Yeah, the numbers, like the setbacks and the square footage and things like that. And then just the general idea of controlling things through setbacks without having to place responsibility on the county for specific enforcement. So if you just keep it small enough, the garden's small enough, and you keep the setbacks large enough, that should take care of most of the problems, and the rest of it is neighbor versus neighbor.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we give direction to staff to pursue those suggestions at this meeting?
Actually, I think what we just discussed is to give the input now.
Right.
And so if you have input forms specific to this individual use ordinance, that's what we, with County Council, Deputy County Council and Jesse just discussed. So he's looking for that now, and we're having that discussion.
All right.
So if you could give your input now.
So, yeah, I think those are good suggestions. Basically, on the six plants that we're talking about, you know, those setbacks certainly don't bother me. And I'd willing, I'd be willing to say, yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to vote for that.
Right, right.
Jerry, do you have any more input on that?
Yeah, the only concern I have is height, height limit, and I, and I don't know whether, are we gonna have a fence requirement? Is there a fence requirement in any of this?
The state requires it not to be visible from a public space, but they don't care about your neighbor. So in terms of visibility, no, no fence. And then, so the county was not inclined to get in a fence requirements just because of the issue of enforcing that.
I always think it, I always thought it was interesting that Oregon, you know, used to, you'd drive by these gardens all the time and maybe not even notice them, but now that they've got fences around them, you know exactly.
With black plastic and stuff, sure.
You know exactly where they are.
Sure.
So I always thought that was interesting. But I, I do have an issue with, with the height, and I don't know what, what the limit is on a marijuana plant. I don't know what they grow too.
10 feet's pretty typical. You could have some weird situations where you could get 15 feet or more for sure, but eight to 10 feet is a huge plant for most people.
So I know nothing about this, but how do you harvest a, a plant that's 10 feet tall?
Oh, well, it's just soft and bendy. You just grab the branch and bend it over like a sapling. It's not like a tree. It's like a, like a cornstalk, you know? You just pull it over and cut it with a pair of scissors.
And does that create a, a much bigger canopy when the, when the, when the plant grows that tall?
Can produce more cannabis total, sure. Bigger, the taller the plant, you can produce more product. And they get larger too, wider, but you can control the height. Most gardeners aren't after a tall plant, honestly. So it's a novelty, really, to the, the tall plant. You, you want to train it in a way that allows you to work on it, like you're saying, sure. But you could still get, you could, without a height limit, you could definitely see some, some tall plants. So it would be reasonable if you want to see a height limit on the upper tiers and put that in. Or my first recommendations were much more fancy and complicated with like, you know, if this, then that, you know? And if, you know, if, you know, if you want a height limit at 40-foot setback, well, then if I can, if I can make 200-foot setback, then maybe I don't have to have a height limit, right? You know, but then it, these kind of things make it so complicated that staff wasn't excited about writing that kind of an ordinance, you know? And I thought, well, that'd be really great because then it would accommodate everybody, but it's not realistic. So it's kind of, you have, it has to be somewhat one-size-fits-all, but without blocking out too many possibilities.
You know, I don't think having a six-foot limit on it would be, you know, a big deal. And I don't know what that penalty would be. Oh, you're over six feet, we need to cut the plant off or something. I mean, I don't know. I don't know. When you get into penalties and stuff like that, we're into a whole different ballgame, so I don't, I don't know where we're going there. But, yeah, I'd like to see the, I'd see, I'd like to see the height limit. I don't have a problem. You're not talking about, I mean, what the biggest thing you're talking about is 300 feet, so that's 15 by 20.
Sure.
I mean, that's the largest area with, with 60-foot, 80-foot setbacks, whatever you got there. You know, I, I don't know that I have a big issue with outdoor growth because I think they're going on now, and I don't really see a lot of them, so I, I, yeah, I.
Sure, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with that either. I think a lot of this is, is it's, it's only an issue when it's an issue, and it's not an issue very often. And so maybe like one out of 100 actually need to have that height limit. But probably those other nine, you know, I'm not saying there's 100, but if there's other gardens that are going over the height limit and nobody notices, nobody's gonna enforce it, and nobody's gonna cut them down anyway, so.
So Jesse, just to move this along, since we've been discussing this a while, you know, the, the board's put, placed a great deal of faith in a working group that has people on both sides of this issue, against and for. And I think what you're coming back with, specific to recommendations, has been extremely well debated within that working group.
Yeah, at least.
And for me personally, I'm putting my faith into that.
Right, I understand.
It's, it's one of those things that if I'm personally uncomfortable with it or not, 64% of District 3. 64% of District 3 said they want something out there. So we're, we're in a position now where we've really set in motion a course of action with that working group to bring back that recommendation. I think with the exchange you heard from the board today, you've got some fairly clear directions on taxation now and personal use piece of this ordinance that will be coming before us fairly soon. You know, Jerry's right, I think, in addressing this height piece. That might be something for you to kind of bat back and forth before it goes to the planning commission. But that's kind of where I'm leaning right now.
Perfect.
Chris, are you done?
Yes, go for it.
I, I think I'm okay with outdoor as long as it's on large lots. I would not be okay with your Tier 1. I just, I, that just puts it right across the street at House over there.
Sure.
And I, I just, I'm wondering if we could lean towards the smaller areas are the ones that are indoors. You know, so your in-town neighborhoods are more of an indoor grow. And as you get into those larger, larger lots where there's space and not so intrusive on your neighbors, then outdoor grows. That's just where I'm leaning. And I, and I think for me, it's because I'm in these houses and these neighborhoods all the time.
Yeah.
And I think for people coming in, for people who live there, you know, when you live in a neighborhood, anything your neighbor does becomes intrusive sometimes, so.
Right, yeah, the idea with it was just to not force it inside was the idea because it's, it's less environmentally responsible. There's some hazards that can come up. You can get people causing damage where, you know, it's just forcing, forcing it inside can cause problems. And so that was the, the notion, just to.
Okay, how about this?
Not my argument.
No, I get it because I've also seen the damage done.
Sure.
What about greenhouse? If it's outside and it's in a neighborhood, that it has to be in a greenhouse?
Sure, yeah, we came up with that too. And that was, I think we, greenhouses became outdoor cultivation. Otherwise, it would be, if it's indoor, then the greenhouse would have to be in a permitted accessory structure to call it indoor. So any, so if it's in a greenhouse, it would be outdoor, requiring it to be a greenhouse. I think we talked about that a little bit. I can't remember if there was sticking points with that or not. But that's definitely a possibility for the lower tiers maybe.
You don't get a permit to put the greenhouse?
Yes, yes you do.
Yeah, well, you don't have to. I didn't, but you're supposed to.
It can still be enforced though, absolutely by, by the code enforcement.
Yeah, anything that supports a roof of any kind, even if it's a piece of plastic, technically it's a structure, but.
We do it, we, we do it right now.
It's based on size.
Yeah.
You could probably answer this worse. I know we do it right now.
Yeah, under 120 square feet, you get some kind of an exemption.
So Jesse, I was thinking, this is the ba, this is the way I really wanted this to go, where we could have some back and forth on questions that you really wanted to have board input on. And I would hope as we go along, we can get these ideas, shoot them back and forth with board members and give you some kind of direction of where you want to go on each one of these kinds of issues as they come up, as you're discussing them, as you develop ideas with your cannabis working group, and you want the board to weigh in.
Right, yeah, because if any of you guys come in at the last minute and, and say that you didn't understand something or you disagree with it, then you're not going to get a lot of sympathy probably.
Oh, no, we've already said that happened, you're right.
Right, right, so.
We don't want that to happen again. Communication needs to be there.
Right, and then just to finish up, a lot of people keep quoting the 60% vote for DelNort for Prop 64 and how, and claiming that they know what that means. But I don't think anybody knows what it means, honestly. And I think we probably could just quit speculating at this point. You know, if, for people who really read Prop 64 thoroughly, it gave the localities all the control in the world, whereas before you had no control. So if you're completely anti-cannabis and you understood Prop 64 through and through, then you supported it because it gave your community the ability to say no. Whereas before you didn't have that ability. So you can't just assume that just because people voted for Prop 64 means they want cannabis in their community. It could mean the exact opposite. So just food for thought.
And I appreciate you saying that on, on your closing, Jesse, because I do see that, and I've asked that question while I'm out walking right now.
Right.
Most of the folks that I've spoken to just wanted the use. They wanted to be able to access it and use it. They didn't want the commercial piece of it.
Not in my backyard.
Not in my backyard.
Certainly.
And so that is a real consideration here.
And we get that you guys have to deal with that more directly than the working group does. And so that's why.
That's why it's a complex issue and we've taken the time. So I, I do really appreciate your time today. It was a very robust discussion. Thank you, Jesse. Joel, did you have anything to add before we close down today?
No, I, just for clarity, I do want to address, I guess, the greenhouse issue. The board's thinking is a greenhouse isn't going to control the smell much anyway. And a lot of greenhouses are ugly. And I think it's a five-foot setback for an accessory structure. And so if you call that indoor, some places do it actually as close to the property line. So I think that was the rationale there.
Thank you. All right, let's open it up for public comment. Or did we already do that? No, I didn't think I did either, public comment. Okay, seeing then, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We're going to move to item number 24, which is consideration of miscellaneous legislative matters pertinent to the county of DelNort. Authorize the chair to sign some appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Jay.
So I don't have any additional letters for you to sign today. There is a considerable amount of legislation being proposed and is beginning to go through the process. Couple of those, AB 1250, which we opposed last year, has reared its ugly head again. Still going, but it's not, not terribly active, but it's still there. And then there's some other language that's been put into another bill that's very similar. Going to keep an eye on some legislation that's being proposed in regards to the privilege for contracting with the state of California to provide to the state prisons. And I say privilege because that is the exact wording. And there's, it's a fee or tax that they want to give to the contractor for providing it. It's a little bit of a, almost offensive, I think, to a contractor. But we may be bringing that back for the board to take direct action on. And there's a variety of agricultural bills and water bills. And we'll see how those pan out and what gets amended and what doesn't. And we'll bring those back on an as-needed basis for action. At the federal level, I think by now everybody has heard that the omnibus bill was passed, and it was signed by the president, and that will fund the government through September. A couple of highlights in regards to that is the appropriation of money and funding for payment in lieu of taxes at the federal level for 17 and 18. We pretty well expected that it was going to get acted on once a couple of items that were near and dear to the administration's heart were dealt with first. They were very controversial. SRS was a little bit less settled, but SRS was incurred, included, albeit at a reduction of funding of a 5% to a 95%, which is a continued trend of reducing the amount of money that goes to the secure rural schools and roads and into, directly into the road maintenance fund. And those funds have to go into that. So that's a little bit disconcerting because it continues to get smaller and smaller. EAS was funded. CDBG was funded with an increase. The, there was also money set aside for the opioid crisis. So we'll be seeing money coming down on that, and there may be something available for us. Also, some of the wildfire issues, there was funding set aside for that. So generally a positive overall for counties as we go forward in regards to that. And of course, it was only through 17 and 18. So no long-term solutions at this point on some of these issues. We're just going to continue, have to follow those. An aside and a little bit of direction will be requested in regards to our federal advocate. And some may know already that Greg Burns has left Van Scowick and has gone to Thorn Run Partners. Our agreement is with Van Scowick, not with Mr. Burns directly. And the direction I would be asking today was, for short-term direction would be to continue a partnership with Mr. Burns, which would require me working with Van Scowick to subcontract with Mr. Burns through the end of this contract. And then work on the long-term decision of the board supervisors at that point for federal advocacy. So if I could get that general consensus, I would appreciate that.
Let's go ahead and ask for that now. I'm seeing Supervisor Berkowitz, Supervisor Cowan.
I have, yeah, thank you. I have spoken with both Stu Van Scowick, who's the principal of Van Scowick and Associates, as well as Mr. Burns. And it was an amicable split. Obviously, we'll be discussing, you know, if our business goes in a different direction or not and what the pros and cons are of going through those. Thorn Run is a little different type of a firm than Van Scowick. Van Scowick is a traditional advocacy firm where Thorn Run is, also includes a lot of government relations. And the local government advocacy will be brought in by Mr. Burns and another principal that's going into that company. So I'll bring more back. I've had discussions, as I said, with both of them. I've seen, gotten some emails from some people that would be working point through Van Scowick at this point. So I think it's been generally dealt with well as far as any type of a separation. We've been through this before twice. One time was not very, was not an amicable split. And we dealt with that. And so this one should be a little bit easier to deal with both sides because Mr. Van Scowick, as well as Mr. Burns, are both very reasonable people, so.
So Jay, if I could, on that, how, I mean, it, it puts Van Scowick at a disadvantage if we just stay with Greg Burns. Is that not right? If they're not going to fill in, were they planning on filling in with somebody else to take Greg's place? And, and how do we know how that would pan out if we were to stay with Van Scowick if we're going to go to Greg Burns?
They've reached out to us and given staff names and bios for the people that would be representing DelNort County. In regards to the advocacy at, at the federal level, generally you're giving, you're giving point people that work directly for your needs. And in this case, it was Greg Burns and Mary Scott Hardwick. Both Mary Scott and Greg moved to the other firm. They can bring in other partners as they need them, but generally you're working with them and they have, they understand all the nuances of your company and/or your government in this case. My recommendation is we stick with the people that know what we have right now so we don't have to make that change. Because although these people are, I'm sure, very talented and they can get it done, they're going to have to come up to speed on the issues. They're probably doing that, but not to the level that Mr. Burns would be at or, or Mary Scott. And they're still reaching out, you know, if Van Scowick is with the bios and the emails. And so I'll be dealing with that and bringing the recommendations back to the board. But to some extent, yeah, overall, the company of Van Scowick would be at a disadvantage because Mr. Burns and Ms. Hardwick have all of the intimate knowledge of DelNort County.
Yeah, no question about it.
That wasn't my point.
What was your point?
It wasn't my point that, that, that they weren't doing a good job. I think they're doing a great job, but, but our contract is with Van Scowick. We had to start someplace. I mean, we started with Greg Burns, and he's done a good job from the start.
Yes. Yeah, if that's your point, I, I fully agree with that. We've closely worked with Mr. Burns now for almost 10 years. And there's been a lot of advantage of that. But I'll work out the details and then I'll be back to the board for the long term. But I appreciate the short-term direction, so we can deal with that. On another note, I'm going to take advantage of having an open mic and alert everybody to tomorrow's tsunami warning test. And it's going to be everywhere out there. You're going to be hearing a lot of this. Between 11 and 12 tomorrow, there will be a three-county test of the systems. This is DelNort, Humboldt, and Mendocino. And you're going to be hearing it across all different types of media, television, radio. Our sirens will go off. There will be, the civilian air patrol will also be flying by with, and they will have a message. All of this is really intended to test the system, but also to keep the people of our community aware of what to do. And this is a distant source type of an event test. And there, there will be reader boards, you've seen them already, I'm sure. The Caltrans reader boards have already been changed over. They're talking about the test, but we want everybody to know there is no need to call your local authorities unless you want to call the sheriff directly. Do not call 911, do not call OES, it's just a test.
Did you say it's also going out on Everbridge too?
It is going to everybody on Everbridge that subscribed, as well as the 911 members. And so again, it's a test. So please don't panic. It is going to test the entire system. And if you don't hear something, that's great. There will be a survey on the county website. People can go and give any feedback on that. And also can call us after the fact if they have any comments or concerns.
I think I'll be concerned to see how that's handled on DirecTV, on Dish Network, and on Sirius Radio. That'll be important.
Yes, it is, because satellite does not norm, not, it may not get across every television station. Now, there are local stations in the Humboldt County area that I would expect that it will come across those on DirecTV and Dish. So Sirius Radio and XM Radio, I don't know. We'll see how that goes. I definitely know that by Coastal and all of our locals will have it. This is in concert with the National Weather Service, state OES, and all of the local operational areas.
Okay.
This is only a test. It says it right here on the piece of paper.
Thank you, Jay, for the only, it's a test update. Everybody's been duly informed now. We expect lots of community response, and we'll send all disgruntled folks to your office directly. And to the sheriff's office directly. All right. Very good. And give him personal cell phone. All right, let's go ahead and move on with committee reports. Supervisor Cowan, why don't you kick us off this morning?
Okay, so I attended the juvenile justice meeting. We received an update from, on juvenile hall from Lonnie Raymond. Heather Snow, who just walked out, and Jack Brazil also came and discussed the mental health issues and the needs and options for the kids in our county. I think that was a great discussion. They'd never been there before, and I think we're seeing more and more mental health issues. And if we take care of them with our kids, it won't carry on into adulthood. I met with Terry Sapam, the director of Building Healthy Communities. We're hoping to take some ideas. Well, that meeting, we were discussing some ideas to take to the school districts about kids' safeties and actually awareness and how they're feeling in the schools. I attended the Chamber Mixer at Finnegan Real Estate. I attended the economic summit, like all you did, so I won't get into that. And also, I guess all of us were at the, we went to the Veterans Memorial fundraiser. I thought it was a great fundraiser. It was quite interesting to watch our senator. And the support from the community was really well. Had a meeting with Marin from Area 1 Agents, the Area 1 Agency for Aging. They were up here last week, I think it was last week, to do a public hearing at the senior center. So her and I met before. And then I went over to the senior center and attended the annual public hearing. I'm the representative from the board to that. And I think what happened when, I mean, all these years, we've had a seat at the board at the senior center. And for some reason, we lost that last year. And I don't know if anybody really talked to them of the reasoning behind that. But what I'm finding is I'm now not getting any input to then take to Area 1 Aging. And there's definitely a disconnect that's happened.
Excuse me, Supervisor Cowan, I did check into that. And our seat, our county seat, has gone to.
City, and I, and I understand.
Yeah, Follman.
Well, I understand it went to a city seat, but I think the question needs to be asked, why did they choose to do that?
Actually, it hasn't gone to the city.
Well, all I know is when I sat on there, you had, from what I believe right now, you have basically just harbor people and city people on there. I don't know if, who, as a, as a. School, okay, so my, yeah, let's, if, if they don't want to give us a seat, which is fine, then I think we should at least ask Charlene to come in and give us regular reports. Because we are, money's going to Area 1 Aging. Area 1 Aging is dealing with certain programs over there. I'd like to know what's going on over there. I was really hoping to have communications with her at the annual report, and she didn't even come out of her office for it, which I thought was quite odd. So, you know, if we can't have our seat, then we need to request her to come in and give us reports. I think that would be helpful, okay? That's kind of where I was getting at. We had a solid waste management authority meeting. Attended the OES training put on by Lori Dangler from HSU and Troy Nicolini from NOAA. That was very informative. from NOAA. That was very informative. I, I thought it was just great. I mean, for me personally, just understanding it all, I was very disappointed. Only half the elected officials attended. I think that was put on primarily for us. They took the time to come up here, and those who missed it, missed a great opportunity. Had a second meeting with Terry Sapam, with Lisa Howard, discussing the safety awareness that we wanted to bring into the schools, and possibly forming the mentoring groups. So, we will be going to Mrs. Howard's AP class in April to take that there. So, that was good. Attended the Celebration of Life for Chuck Blackburn. Attended the Wine and Cheese fundraiser for Republican. And then, attended the Rotary fundraiser with the Japanese dinner that was prepared by the current Japanese exchange students. That was also good. After a very long day, it was great to see Kiyoshi there, you know, especially since he had just arrived. And it was fun to have a nice dinner with him. I'm hoping the weekend went well with him and getting him around. And then, I hear we were up to 20 people coming back on the 15th. So, that's going to be great. And I think that's going to be a good opportunity for our community to open up our doors to them like they had to us. I'm just bummed that it's only two days.
We all are. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Berkwoods?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long, hard fight to restore the funding for the Secure Rural Schools and Communities bill. Finally, it's great to announce that we've been successful. But, this has been a 20-year flight for me, and I really want to share a little bit of history that you may not be aware of. Back in the 1990s, when President Clinton closed down logging on the federal forests, it severely impacted school funding for western states because they relied on the revenues they received from logging on those forests. Without that income, local schools would suffer and counties would suffer. This is where that quote-unquote "somebody" I worked for, as Supervisor Cowan refers to Congressman Frank Riggs, got involved. I was asked, tasked with the, working with other congressional field representatives to come up with a plan to replace those revenues. One of the people that worked with me to help develop that plan was Delmar County Supervisor Chuck Blackburn. That plan was known as the Secure Rural Schools and Communities Act of 2000. It was only mandated the last five years. So, during that time, in order to get it extended, I was able to bring Debbie Wakefield back to Washington DC with me to testify before Committee of Congress on the importance of this funding for Delmar local schools and the county. When the bill expired, I was on the Board of Directors of the California School Boards Association. In that capacity, a team was developed to lobby for an extension. With the assistance of the Executive Director, Scott Plotkin, I took several trips to Washington DC and met with the Undersecretary of the Department of Agriculture, which resulted in the administration's support for an extension of the legislation. Since that time, we received another extension that expired in 2015. With this new extension, it only funds the years 2017 and 2018 at the reduced levels of, as you've heard, 95 percent. These federal fundings, funds ensure that we can continue to repair our local roads, provide some extras for our school district, like the, as was done before, the 40-year-old high school gym floor, and the tract that was accomplished when I was on the board. In addition, it now provides assistance to law enforcement in the form of patrols, training, and equipment related to emergency response. This is brand-new. This has never been, been done before as a part of this legislation. So, now the fight begins for another extension for 2019 and beyond. As I said before, this has been a 20-year fight for me. First, as a staffer with Congressman Frank Riggs, then lobbying with California School Boards Association, and now with the Board of Supervisors. This is one of the bills that our Board of Supervisors promoted while we were in Washington DC. And we're pleased to see that it was included in the just-passed omnibus bill. So, now our task is clear. We must begin now to plan trips back to Washington DC to ensure that a new bill that can provide permanent funding for Delmar County and our local schools. And that's the report on that particular section. As you know, for other kinds of things during the last couple of weeks, we attended the Veterans Memorial Dinner. We raised over $40,000. All the board members were involved. It was a fantastic event. I'd sure like to see more like that. Unbelievable. Our, our senator was phenomenal, as you know. And I'd like to give you, Chris, credit also for being great as far as getting the money out of these people. KAEF TV, I was on a panel discussion on cannabis. That entire television program is on my website. It was streamed to the entire community. And while we were on the air on that, they had a four-point, I think it was 4.6 earthquake, right there while we were on the air. It was, they cut away to this programming. It was interesting. Naturally, of course, one of my best friends departed this earth. It's unfortunate, but Chuck Blackburn and I worked on this legislation that I just explained, and we worked on a number of committees. He, as a member of the board, and me with the California School Boards Association. We attended the Republican Wine and Cheese. It was a great event. And also, later today, I've got a telephone conference with Senator Harris's staff. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I attended, my first meeting right after our last board meeting was with, was at RCRC down in Sacramento, which is always pretty busy. The RCRC Chair, Rex Bone, from Humboldt County, discussed the creation of an ad hoc advisory committee on cannabis, and it appointed those members to that. The next RCRC meeting will be at the, in the chair's county, which will be in Humboldt County, so it'll be very close. And that's next month, or that's in April, the 25th through the 26th. A lot of stuff going on. We had a, a update on CalPERS funding and sustainability update, which kind of is an oxymoron for sustainability. But, anyway, it was a pretty good report, but it appears as though all of the expectation are on the employers, which in this case, in our case, is the county. That's where extra funding, or that's where funding comes in to fill the gap if CalPERS doesn't do well in whatever, however they're managing the money. So, it's a little disappointing, but that's the way it is. Getting, you know, I hate to run SRS and PILT into the ground, but at the NACO Legislative Conference and, you know, with RCRC's federal advocacy group, they were in DC not too long ago advocating for PLT as well as wildfire, wildfire funding reform, the Farm Bill, and the support of the federal financial transportation and infrastructure projects. So, all of those things, SRS, PILT were, were high on their list and always have been for quite a while. Tree mortality is, is a report that we get every meeting. And with the last survey that was conducted about tree mortality in California, there is another 27 million dead trees, which from 2010 now brings us up to 129 million trees, which is not, not good. The, we had on Proposition 70, which is the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Reserve Fund, the RCRC Board of Directors adopted a support position. On Proposition 71, which is the effective date of state ballot measures, they have adopted a support position. And on Proposition 72, the property tax exclusion for rainwater capture, has a, has also adopted a support position. There was some talk on the agricultural replacement measures for emission reductions for farmers and ranchers. There are significant funds available for rural area districts. So, that was an opportunity for rural counties to apply for funding for replacing equipment. On other notable things, talked about sustainable groundwater management, which I discussed our issues with that particular problem and them not looking at how we are currently designated as a moderate instead of low or very low in our usage. So, we need to, we need to keep on that. Hopefully, they're going to do something about that. That was about it with RCRC. When I came, I came back and went to a Fort Dick Fire Hall meeting. We discussed, the, it, there was, they're working on an addition to the Fire Hall in Lake Earl, and also talked about the auto aid agreement with why the Fire, Fort Dick Fire Department has not signed on to an auto aid and had some discussion about that. They had some reasoning for that. Seemed, seemed plausible, so at this point, I understand why they haven't signed on. Went to Chamber Mixer, as was noted, at David Finnegan Real Estate. Went to the Economic Summit, had some great presentations. Chair Howard, Blake Alexander, Blake Enscore, Kelsey Bozeman did a great job, Tamara Layton, Kristi Hernandez, all those were very interesting, interesting presentations. Did go to the Point of Honor fundraiser, which Senator McGuire is truly a rock star. He, he was able to auction off nothing for more value than something. So, I thought that was great. I went to the North Deal meeting in, at Caltrans in Eureka, where our discussion's last chance grade. We had the update today, so I won't go over that. 199, 197. More litigation on that, or a new litigation, I guess. The same, same issues, but new litigation, so we're working on that. As well as Dr. Finebridge, those are the big items in Delmar County that, that are coming up. As Supervisor Cowan said, went to the tsunami preparedness training, which was, which is always good. Troy always does a great job, and Lori Dangler, they did a great job. And we got a chance to meet Ryan, and I forgot his last name. Anyway, he's going to be our new guy. Troy said this is, Troy Nicolini said this is probably going to be his last time that he is going to be doing a presentation, but he would still be around. Then, went to, or I went to the Celebration of Life for Chuck Blackburn. He's been a very close friend for many years. I'm going to say close to 50 years. We have been, have known each other and, you know, for the last 25 years have been pretty close friends, whether on golf courses. Or, he's actually one of the reasons that I sit in this chair right here, right now. He's always been great support for me. Went to the Republican Wine and Cheese event. And at this point, just an update on Pacific Shores cleanup. I think I've given this before, but we've got some actual numbers. 196 tons of waste, 102 tires, 31 mattresses and couches, several appliances and other debris. And that doesn't count the trailers and trailer frames. I can't not give enough applause to Helen Ferguson, who has really ramrodded this whole thing. Alan Winogrotta and his crew have done a great job. Charles Bargalata and Frank Kemp from Fish and Wildlife, what great partners in that particular project. They did just an outstanding job and a great cleanup. We're just this close to wrapping that up, and hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that done. That's it for me.
Thank you, Supervisor. Just kicking on, on that specific comment, you know, the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority and their green awards is actually recognizing the county and your work and the Lake Earl Grange's work, and specifically to award that recognition for that large-scale cleanup. I know we've been talking about it for decades. It's, it's a problem area, and I think the solutions that the county has helped put in place with the Pacific Shores District is really going to help resolve that. And thank you for your leadership and guidance on that piece. Attended the First Five Family Children Commission. We, we talked a lot about the ACIS program, which stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences. And as science begins to evolve, especially in the CDC, we're starting to recognize how health outcomes for children are affected long-term in their ability to live a long life, and how that environment as they're growing up, either in a single-family home or without a family, is affecting the long-term survivability of that child into later years that most of us do enjoy, and how that results in mental illness, substance abuse, cardiovascular disease, and even cancer. It's not even argued to this point. The Center for Disease Control has already said this is happening. The, the presentation which Angela Glor gave us at the commission was so moving to me because of what we see currently within our young children in our school district. I think I'm going to ask Angela to bring this to our next board meeting for a presentation to our board. It's something that really revolves around our goals under our children's bill, and I want the board to be cognizant of what's going on here. If there's any way we can't support it with what we're doing. Attended a Smith River Neighborhood Watch meeting where needles were a topic of discussion in the Smith River area, mostly opiate-related or heroin-related needles. Also tended a, the Chamber Mixer that was referred to at David Finnegan's real estate office. The Veterans Memorial Dinner. Got to compliment the board. We all showed up. We all gave a great deal of support to veterans in our community. Love to do another dinner like that again, but it was absolutely impressive. The Economic Summit this year was a home run, I think, for the Chamber of Commerce. The board, again, was fully there and engaged, and really touting the work that not only the community does, but also the county and the city for the great things that are happening here in our community to push things forward. Attended the Spring Fling in Smith River, and it was a great showing out there, and also had some corned beef and cabbage for St. Patrick's Day there. Also tended the Delmar Fun Run, which is an annual event, starting at the Hayouchi Covered Bridge through our national park. As discussed, the Delmar Solid Waste Management Meeting, Agenda Review, and had a meeting with Dominic Mello and Heidi Kunkstall in continuation of our discussions around housing, community development of the state, and what we could potentially start doing about some resistance that we're seeing with the state of California, housing and community development as it relates to trailer parks. Also, talking a great deal with the Resource Conservation District with carbon cycling. And in addition, as everybody mentioned, specific to the Operational Emergency Services here in our county, great presentation by Lori Dangler and Troy Nicolini about tsunami preparedness. I know the electeds that showed up had a great deal of input on that, especially having returned from Japan most recently. I know Mary Enscore offered a lot of input on how we could better engage the community in support of actions and getting the word out. It'll be interesting to see the response to tomorrow's test, as CAO Serena had mentioned. My hope is that after that test moves forward tomorrow, either it's the CAO or one of the staff with OES could give us an update on what, what we saw for response in the community. So, some kind of measurement that would tell us the engagement or level of engagement of the community and their readiness. My next piece was sitting down with Building Healthy Communities Heather Equinos on some discussions around education, and then also attended the Republican Wine and Cheese event and the Japanese And then also attended the Republican Wine and Cheese Event and the Japanese Dinner that Supervisor Cowan had referred to. It was great to have Kiyoshi there, just flown in, had been up for 24 hours from Japan. But what a trooper he is in staying engaged in this community and getting ready for the delegation's visit on the 15th. Also, as the board mentioned, the celebration of life for Supervisor Chuck Blackburn. It was heartening to see the community support for the supervisor. I think the most important thing said there, that the supervisor was everybody's friend. He really went out of his way to let you know that he was going to be there for you and even for me, starting in 1994. But we will be honoring Supervisor Blackburn at our next meeting. And hopefully, at that point, we could share a lot of our personal stories and the community can share a lot of their personal stories from, in remembrance of Chuck and in support of what he did for our community. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you all for attending today. It was really good to see everybody out and we'll see you again in April. Have a great week.